Is you mean.
And I will let everybody in.
All right, thanks.
And everybody is in.
All right, welcome everyone. This meeting of the Livingston City Commission is called the order. May we have roll call please?
Chair Holmwood.
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz.
President.
Commissioner Freeman.
President.
Commissioner Maybe.
Here.
Commissioner News.
Here.
On our agenda is our public comment. Please be reminded that public comment is limited to items over which the city commission has control jurisdiction supervision and advisory power. Please state your name and address or raise your hand, put the icon or the emoji hand up or put your name in the chat and we will call in. Any public comment?
Yes, Madam Chairman, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, members of the commission. My name is Sean Hill. I live at thirteen fifteen South State Line Road in Driggs Idaho. And I serve as Executive Director for Friends of Park County. So first, I'd like to comment on public noticing and calendaring. In the last several months, Friends of Park County has been hearing from folks that it's difficult to know when zoning commission zoning commission meetings are happening. And what's before them, particularly work sessions. I think this is an issue that could easily be addressed by applying the same noticing requirements for work sessions as is required for regular meetings containing action items. I know that's a bit more upfront work for staff, but I think that would set the stage for broader and deeper public engagement. I'd also like to suggest that the city consider combining the zoning commission and planning board. It appears that this is common practice around the state and having one board may allow for the public to better follow along and it may also create less work for city staff. But most importantly, it would be good to have the body that has crafted the growth policy implement the growth policy. And then I'd like to address the issue of calendaring. At the commission's December seventh meeting, you were wrestling with the idea of whether or not to hold this meeting tonight. Though I appreciate the desire to get things done, I'd ask that the needs of the public be foremost in your calendaring calendaring. Understandably, I mean, a lot of us are tuning out right now from public affairs and I think that the city commission should be able to do the same. I'm going to switch gears here, if I may, and address the annexation that's on the agenda tonight. Friends of Park County strongly believes.
John, hold on one second because that item is further on the agenda. That's when you do need to address it.
Okay, it wasn't. Okay, and then I'll wrap up with my comments with public noticing and and include agendas there because that wasn't clear to me because the annexation is not listed under a public hearing. So it's not, it's hard for me to understand if there in fact will be an opportunity to comment or if I need to do that now. So if there is in fact a public hearing to be held for an agenda item, it should probably say as such on the agenda. And thank you for the opportunity to comment and all the best to you in the rest of the meeting.
Great, thank you, Sean. Michael, could you clarify for everyone our public noticing that we have for zoning so that everyone can understand it? And Sean brought up that question. As well, yeah, the second question too, and I someone help me with it. I wanted to answer.
I think he had a few. I think I'll try to answer all of them and see if I catch if I missed it. I'm just going to share my screen real quick. Anytime that anyone has a question on anything that's calendared in the city, this is the city's webpage homepage. You can just click on city calendar. And it will show you everything that's going on. In this case, if you're just interested in zoning commission, you can drop it down. And look for city zoning commission. Oh, did I screen that share?
I can see it. I'm looking.
If you do city zoning commission and hit apply, then it just shows you the city zoning commission meetings. And if you click on the city zoning commission meeting, it shows you what's there. And then if you need to, you can go to the agendas minutes and they'll give you all the information there. So it's really easy to find there. You can also go to our public notice page, but that the calendar is by far the easiest way to find all of that information. And again, it has all the information for all the boards, events, anything that happens is on there. As far as combining the zoning commission and the planning board, you can't do that by state law unless you have unless you've actually set it up that way. So there's an extraterritorial extraterritorial area. So it has to be a city county planning board in order to function as a zoning commission. So you can't just have a combined one for the city. That's against state code. The so that covers the public notice and the I think the calendaring. If people are interested in.
Michael, can I also elaborate on? So the county, we had discussed and had as agenda items in the past. Combining the city county planning boards and the county decided against that. And we went with that. That's another part of what you had asked about. Right, go ahead, Michael, sorry.
Yeah, and just the last item is if anyone's interested in the calendaring for the year, that will be brought in front of the commission on probably the first meeting in January. They set up their entire schedule in that meeting. So everyone will know well ahead of time, the the published dates for the commission meetings for the entire following year unless anything changes. And that I think I get all the main points on that.
Anyone else have something that just to help clarify those questions? Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, go ahead, Barb.
I just wanted to thank the city for hosting us at the open house today. You guys have done a great job of decorating. I am sitting here in my office at the community foundation with my very blank walls. So we are also planning an open house, but you have set a high bar in terms of making it look nice, but particularly the historic photos are such a great touch and so interesting. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Barb. Any other public comments scrolling through just to see? Don't anyone in the chat or any hands up? Last call. Okay, we will move on. Tonight, we have four consent items. Do we have a motion from the commission on consent items A, B, C, and D, or any that you would like move for consideration or remove for consideration?
Madam Chair, I I move to approve consent items A and B and to hold C and D for discussion.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion on consent items A and B. Motion and motion by Schwartz and a second by Maybe, I think, or Freeman. Roll call, please.
Chair Holmwood.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Or.
Commissioner Freeman.
For.
Commissioner Maybe.
For.
Commissioner News.
Or.
Motion passes. Quentin, do you want to address consent items C and D?
Yes, I'm just. Um, I just really, really want to point out. Anybody who applies and accepts a term to a board. Tim Stevens to Parks and Trails and Pamela Schaefer to the Conservation Board. Thank you for stepping up and in your roles here. I just want to make sure that you're publicly recognized. Thank you. I yield.
All right, I will add to that. Thanks for pointing out the two individuals that have applied and have been recommended by their designated boards as well as I think that we have some of the hardest working boards I've ever witnessed as far as city work and community work. So thank you. Although we have a lot of great community boards as well. So do we, we want to move on to a motion for C and D?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve consent items C and D.
We have a motion by Schwartz and a second by Maybe. Roll call, please.
Chair Holmwood.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Or.
Commissioner Freeman.
For.
Commissioner Maybe.
For.
Commissioner News.
Or.
Motion passes. Tonight, we have no proclamations and no scheduled public comments. We do have two public hearings. Our first one is ordinance thirty twenty five, an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Livingston, Montana. Amending Article two, four, and five, Chapter thirty of the Livingston Municipal Code entitled zoning as it pertains to manufacturing and use table amendments. Mr. Cardus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I turn this one over to Matthew, I will just say this is a public hearing. So after after if it's approved tonight, then it will take effect in thirty days. I also do just want to mention that there is public comment available on every item on the agenda unless it says otherwise. So it's not just a public hearing that the public can comment on. It's any item, whether it's a public hearing, an ordinance, a resolution, or an action item. So with that, I will turn it over to Matthew for his staff report.
So this is the second reading of this item. Again, it's an update to definitions of manufacturing, basically splitting manufacturing out into four different categories instead of the two current categories, causing a bit of confusion. Especially with those producing food or beverage where they didn't know if they fell under light or heavy industrial. So basically, this breaks it out to give more clarity with the intent of encouraging some of the the light and low impact manufacturing within more areas of the city. Other definition updates have to do with alcohol production for the most part or restaurants. Currently, something like the bakery downtown doesn't really fall under any of our definitions. The way they're written, it does. It's not considered a restaurant. So just some cleanup for that to make sure that something like the bakery can still exist and is allowed under zoning. So nothing overly complicated with this one. You've already heard it. And you did all vote unanimously to move it on to the second reading and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
All right, thank you, Matthew. Yes, this is the second reading and I will open the public hearing. And we'll have public comment first and then we'll move to commissioners. Any clarifying questions of Matthew before we open the public hearing? This public hearing is now open on ordinance thirty twenty five. Any public comment? Any public comment? I don't see any hands up. You don't need in the chat. I try to go a little slower because it's sometimes hard to get in or to be seen. No public comment? Public hearing is now closed. Commissioners? That gavel is my phone, by the way.
Um, I'll just chime in real quick. Once again, nice work on this. For clarifying everything. Nice job. Keep up the good work. Thanks.
Anyone else? I just have a short comment. I think the work that we have seen throughout this process, because this is the third time this has been in front of us. It's great. It's work that we've been wanting to have staff work on and have the time to work on. And now with Matthew's expertise, it's been great and I really appreciate this ordinance and its potential for helping clarify some issues in our zoning with manufactured homes. Anyone else? Okay. Do we have a motion from the commission on ordinance number thirty twenty five?
I'll make a motion. We approve ordinance thirty twenty five.
Second.
We have a motion by Newt and a second by Friedman. Roll call, please.
Chair Holmwood.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Or.
Commissioner Freeman.
For.
Commissioner Maybe.
For.
Commissioner News.
For.
Motion passes. Our next public hearing is ordinance number thirty twenty six, an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Livingston, Montana. Amending Chapter seven, Police Department, Article four, Dispatch Services as enacted by ordinance number eighteen oh eight. Regulating the fees and or the fees for false alarms. Mr. Cardus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is again the second reading in a public hearing for this ordinance. It's approved tonight. It will also take effect in thirty days. Tonight, all we are asking is that the ordinance be updated to remove the fees from the code itself. And just make the mechanism for setting fees, recommendation by the city manager and approval by the city commission. So that will probably be done by resolution. It'll just be a schedule of fees. And once this is changed, we will review the draft for that schedule of fees. But I'm happy to answer any questions.
Fine. I'll ask my questions after public comment. Anyone else have clarifying questions? Okay. This public hearing on ordinance thirty twenty six is now open. Any public comment? I don't see anyone. Okay, no public comment that I know of. One last check. This public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, questions or comments?
I'll do this, if I may.
Go ahead.
Say I all of our, I know we're being quiet, but these are the second readings and I all my questions were answered the last go around. So so thanks. I think it's very clear.
Agreed. Anyone else? Commissioners? I do have one question. So, Michael, you referenced in would you mind repeating how moving it from an ordinance and into more regulations or and processes, how, number one, what's the advantage? And secondly, how do we or how does that change then how where it's moving from more of a law to a process? How does that change when people don't pay the fees or if there is a problem with collecting?
Sure. So the the process really remains the same. It's still approval by the commission. It just is by resolution instead of by ordinance. But the ordinance does say that the commission sets the fees. So in any anything the commission sets still maintains the authority of the city. It's not like we can't enforce it because it's a resolution. It's still in the ordinances that you will set the fees and once those fees are set, they're binding. So it doesn't help anybody avoid paying the fees. It does give us a lot more flexibility in changing the fees. Because right now it's at least a two to three month process to change anything through the ordinance change process, whereas really for a resolution, it could be a one meeting issue where we could bring a change in and say, hey, this isn't working. We need to change this up or down and then you could approve it and we'd be we'd be fine from that point forward. It does offer a lot of flexibility in that way. Additionally, the less we have in the code, just the cleaner it is overall. The code should be easy to search, easy to find and cover the the large scale items. And then these smaller things that are going to change more often should reside somewhere else in city policies or city fee schedules, just like just like we do for public works for over the scale fees or any other fees that we do inside the city. We don't put them in in the code. We we take care of them other places. So that's the the advantages and it really just aligns it with the rest of the city fees.
All right, thank you for that clarification because I think people wonder, you know, why move it and what's the advantage? And I think that's a great way of clarifying it that it it's an easier process to change when it's in a resolution and in in the city processes than to have it in ordinances. So, thank you. Anyone else? All right, do we have a motion from the commission on ordinance number thirty twenty six?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance three zero two six.
Second.
We have a motion by Schwartz and a second by Friedman. Roll call, please.
Chair Holmwood.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Or.
Commissioner Freeman.
Or.
Commissioner Maybe.
For.
Commissioner News.
For. Motion passes. Tonight, we have no ordinances. We do have a couple resolutions. And two, we have three, exact. Our first resolution is resolution fifty fifty oh nine, sorry. A resolution, the city commission of the city of Livingston, Montana, authorizing the city manager to sign a collective bargaining agreement with me local twenty seven eleven A for the period of July one, twenty twenty two through June thirty, twenty twenty seven. Mr. Cardus, and would you make sure that you're explaining the acronym as well?
This is the the third of our collective bargaining agreements that we've brought in front of you. This is the Public Works Union. That's what Ashley stands for in that's that's who it is. So this is newly negotiated with union and it is meant to take place meant to take effect in FY twenty two, but I would point your or point you to page ninety nine, which basically says this this CBA will take effect once approved by the commission and signed by the parties. The intent behind that is obviously in today's labor market, there's a big incentive to get people up and I won't say we'll get them to market rate, but at least where they can see market rate from within the city. So this CBA will take effect immediately upon passage by you as the commission, if so approved. Again, we did the affinity based bargaining with this agreement and I think again, it worked very well. This agreement was basically arrived at inside of one business day, which saves us a lot of time. Also, it's a five year agreement. So again, we actually won't have a CBA due for renegotiation for three years from this point. Fire still is good for three years. The LPD would be a year after that. And then this is a five year agreement. So this would carry us all the way through there. While there are numerous changes throughout the document, it is a very, I'd say it's a very solid document that both the union and the city agrees fair and addresses a lot of concerns by both parties. So I was very happy with the way this turned out. I do ask you, if you would look on page one hundred in the very first paragraph and then under Article one, there's still a typo there that says cemetery. We're removing that language from the CBA. So if you would cross that out of your copies. And then there's also a typo on page one twenty three, which is exhibit B. And there it still lists the animal control officer, but the animal control officer has been moved out of public works and out of Ashley. So if you would cross that out as well and approve that this evening with those changes, I would greatly appreciate it. Again, I can't give you we could break into the numbers if you would like, but this is again a market adjustment, just like the other CBAs when we did those. It isn't based off an incremental change. It was based off of looking at at market rates around the state for similar jobs and getting as close as we could with the compensation structure. But overall, again, I think it's a it's a very strong agreement. It will last us for a long time and you know, some credit to to the union. They were great to work with and I think it's a good process that helps build relationships and is not adversarial like some union negotiations could be. So I think overall, the city and unions have done a great job with that of maintaining the relationships through the negotiation process. But again, I'm happy to answer any questions. And I think Shannon is on as well. If you have any questions for him.
All right, any clarifying questions before we open it to public? Okay, we'll open it to public comment first and then yours. Any public comment on resolution fifty oh nine? All right, no public comment. Commissioners, questions, comments? Melissa, go ahead.
Yeah, Chair Holmwood, I'm interested in hearing from Michael and or Shannon on, I guess, like, what are the most exciting or interesting updates to the agreement?
Well, I'll answer from my point of view and Shannon can answer from his if he's like. And I'm sure if you ask the union, they would give you a different answer from either of those answers. But I think I think there's a couple of big things for me that made this a great agreement. One is I think it really does address everybody's needs. Like we looked at new guys just starting, you know, the housing market. How can we make sure they're compensated well enough to be able to go forward and live here? Which I don't know if we accomplished that, but at least we moved towards that. We were able to align some things with the rest of the city, which makes administration for me easier. Things like holidays, everybody's on the same holiday schedule now, which is very nice. So that goes that goes pretty good. And then one of the things that actually was the union's ideas that I really liked through this was we broke out more specific pays for qualifications, cert pay certification pays. So and we aligned it, I think, better to encourage development within their field and to reward them when they get that development. So that's exciting to me. And so those are probably the main things for me. I don't know if she anything curious or not. If you guys do anything to add, Shannon?
I do. And to be honest with you, Mike, your two were exactly mine as well. This contract certainly increases salaries and allows them to have a livable wage for such a loyal, dedicated, hardworking group. I am excited about the certification pay and licenses such as a one C at our wastewater facility being increased dramatically, water certifications, arborists. Really, I think those certifications are going to promote a lot of professional development in in the department, which not only does our department good, it does our whole community well as as well. So I'm just really excited. In the process, the the affinity based bargaining was was really a positive thing for administration and the union. And I'm really happy that we have structure in the department that also allows for succession planning with upper mobility opportunities within the department. So those are my thoughts on it. And I do see, you know, Dan Baker is the union president. He is on this meeting and so is Nate McClure as well. So they may, if you if if you so wish, they may have an opportunity to comment as well. But I'm excited to be able to hopefully move forward for the next five years with a collective bargaining. with a sea, a collective bargaining agreement that works for, for all sides. Thank you.
Melissa, you still have the floor.
I'm open, you know, your discretion. As chair, if you want to hear from more folks, I will say I'm really glad to hear those updates from the city manager and the public works director. That's fantastic news and it really, you know, helps bring this department into alignment with some of the other bigger goals we've been working towards, like livable pay and, um, growth within departments, upward mobility within the city. So this is fantastic news. Thanks for those updates.
Thank you, Melissa. I will go next because I agree with the, like the trainings and that movement within the departments or the department or departments that it is, you know, we've been pushing for that in other places within the city. As not just us, but of course the city manager and management in general. And I, it's great to see and it's great to see that, um, the union and the, and the managers are on board and all pushing for that same goal. Also, Michael or Shannon, would you like to describe what infinity based, negotiating or negotiations is like? So that others understand, because this is the second, third, fourth time that, you know, we've done it. So.
Yeah. So affinity based bargaining is a new, uh, I'd say it's new. It's been around for a long time, but it's something new the city is doing. Uh, we actually had the Department of Commerce, uh, they sent some guys out from Seattle to give us some training on this particular, um, method of bargaining. And really what it is, is instead of the, I'd say the old method of coming in in an adversarial stance and saying, you know, I'm not going to give you any more than this and trying to talk the other side down, or if you're the union trying to talk us up and pay. It really is just a much more open and transparent process where you say, hey, listen, this is how the money comes in. This is how the money goes out. We have this pool of money. How would you like it distributed? What are the, you know, what are other items that would make it easier to work here, give you more job satisfaction? Um, here's some things that I would like from the administrative perspective. You know, what if, if you would, if we could get this, what, what is it that would make that, um, you know, acceptable to you? And it's why we can get, I think, better agreements in a much shorter amount of time. Is because there's just not that level of mistrust that we're trying to hide information or whatever. If the union asks for information, then we go pull it and we get it to them. Uh, there's no reason for them not to know, um, you know, what the budget is based on. Uh, we talked a lot about the budget and how it, where it comes from, where it goes, why this can be spent here, but not there. Uh, and if you weren't compensated for this, I can do it this way, but I can't do it that way. And, uh, it just, I think everybody involved, one has a much better idea of how the agreement works when it's done and why it works that way. But also that it's, that the bargaining is in good faith, that we're, we're doing what we can to, uh, give them what they need. And that they are in turn, you know, bargaining in good faith and giving us a great product, um, for what we're paying for. So overall, it's just, I think, a much cleaner, uh, a much healthier way to come to agreements. I would not even sure I would call it bargaining. It's really just getting together and working together to come up with the best answer for the union and the city and the community.
Great. Thank you. Another thought too is it's great to see, um, support for this union and support for the unions within the city. Uh, I, I myself have done both from management to, um, to helping negotiate contracts and being on grievance committees and, uh, a union member. And I'm really glad to hear that we're working together because I believe in unions and I'll say it out loud. And I hope that we can still continue having them as, uh, an important part of our, um, if, or our, national infrastructure and that, you know, as far as our planning and working together. So, um, I hope that this kind of work continues with the city. Is there anyone from the union who wanted to make a comment? I know Michael said that there were a few people here. No pressure really though.
I don't think Dan has audio, so he probably can't comment.
Thanks again, everyone for working. Go ahead, Melissa.
I just have one question, sorry, um, that I didn't ask earlier. So why is the cemetery, why are you requesting cemetery to be deleted?
Uh, we basically just changed the, the nomenclature for the different departments. It's just, it's not a functional change. It's more just a name change.
So it would still be carried out by the public works department, just under a different word?
Right. We just included them, I think in streets, but that's what, I don't remember off the top of my head. Shannon, can you, can you speak to that?
Yes. So for the last eight years, we've had a department called the Roaming Crew that more or less has been the parks department. And, uh, one of their requests was to not be named the Roaming Crew anymore and, and be a proud Parks Department, which the cemetery falls under the purview of the Parks Department.
All right. Thank you. I think that's a good name change. Now, the, the cemetery is a very important part of our community and we hear about that a lot from people within the community or through the years I have. And so, um, adding it in to show that it's really an important, it, it is a park of sorts, right? And I think putting it in those words, great. Good idea. Anyway. Okay. Let's move on to a motion.
All right. I'll make the motion that we approve ordinance number thirty twenty six with the deletion of the word cemetery under article one and the deletion of animal control officer under exhibit B.
When you said ordinance, but it's resolution.
Did I ring the wrong number?
It resolution fifty oh nine.
Thank you for catching that. I had marked the wrong page. Okay. Can I, um, withdraw my first motion and make a, a new motion?
Yeah.
Is that allowed? Okay. Let me find. I'll try again. So resolution, I make a motion to approve resolution five thousand nine with the deletion of the word cemetery under article one and the deletion of animal control officer under exhibit B. Thank you.
We have a motion by Newt and a second by Maybe. Roll call please. Yes.
Commissioner Maybe.
Or.
Commissioner News.
Or.
Motion passes. Next resolution is resolution fifty ten, a resolution of intent of the city of Livingston, Montana to annex certain land on petition by Christopher Laren. Mr. Cardes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So you may remember earlier, I said I wasn't going to bring any more, um, annexations to you. Well, this one isn't from me. This one's from the landowner. So this is an actual request. So this is the end on, uh, end of Love Lane, end of Love Lane, excuse me. If you look in your packets on page one thirty four, uh, there's a map, uh, that shows you the parcel. It's really the, um, north side of a block, uh, that faces Love's Lane. It borders the current city, uh, boundary. Right where Eagles Landing is. So while the, while the map you see shows an empty field, uh, there next to it in the purple, that's actually the, uh, the condominiums from Eagles Landing. Uh, so the magenta outlined area is the new area that's being asked, um, for annexation by the owner. They would like to, uh, bring that into the city to develop it according to, um, city standards. So they would then have to build according to city standards for utilities, streets, uh, et cetera. And I will pass that off to Matthew for his staff report.
Just to start off with, because we did have a public comment on the public hearing nature. Uh, this is a first reading. It's a resolution of intent. If you were to, uh, vote to pass the resolution of intent, it would move on to a public hearing. And that would be the second meeting in January and that would have to go through the whole fifteen day notice process. So that's something to be aware of. So as Michael noted, this is the property behind the existing condos, uh, which I believe used to be called Eagles Landing. I think they're now marketing it as something different, the flat that Yellowstone banned maybe. Uh, so it's adjacent to what is a current high density residential parcel, uh, that's directly behind Albertson's at on Love's Lane. Uh, as noted in the staff reports, uh, it is consistent with a, a couple of items in the growth policy. The future land use map for the extraterritorial jurisdiction shows medium density residential. Uh, that's the proposed use of the property. It would have to go through the whole zoning process with the zoning commission and then come before you as well. And then it, uh, does fill the need, uh, for housing potentially within the city, which is, is noted in the growth policy. It's not infill, uh, which is a strong theme of the growth policy. It is, uh, being proposed in an already developed area on an already developed parcel and is one parcel that's being annexed. I should note that, uh, we are also required to annex the roads adjacent to, and I have given you an updated resolution from the first one that you saw, uh, noting that. I did leave that out on the first one. I have spoken to Shannon briefly about that. Um, he didn't have any concerns. We will require road upgrades, uh, when or if the property were to be annexed and developed. Uh, and the property owner has been made aware of that. The property owner is also here today to answer questions if you have any for him. Uh, and as noted in the staff report, staff is recommending that you annex this parcel as, uh, staff believes it is consistent with the growth policy. And that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Matthew. Thank you, Michael. Um, could you put the map back up? So the, Michael used the word magenta, but I think it was green on the one that we just saw on the screen and I want to make sure that we, clarify that because it might look different in our colored copy is what my reason.
Is the city, is the city board? Or the purple? I guess it's purple.
So it's that property in the green and, and just a clarifying question before I open it, um, and then if anyone else has, would you're saying the right of way? So that would be Love's Lane. Is there any right of way requests on either side of it to the west and east or northwest and southeast, whatever direction that is?
Yeah. So, uh, you can see on the western boundary there, it does border Miller Drive. Uh, so we would have to annex Miller Drive into the edge of the property line, um, there. So you, it would be Love's Lane and the, and Miller Drive, basically to the bounds of the property.
And would that still be accessible and made potentially into a city street in the future? Or is that then the property and closed off?
No, so it would remain a, a public right of way. Um, the city would have to go through the abandonment process to abandon that road because there's so many properties, uh, adjacent and accessed off Miller Drive. I think that would be very unlikely. So I wouldn't expect any change to the road other than potential improvements if the property were to develop in the city.
Okay. And then one last question. Thank you. So the advantage to the city of annexing Love's Lane is, can you clarify that again?
So you can kind of see it on this aerial. Uh, it's a little bit tough, but if you can see the Love's Lane in the city is, uh, quite a bit wider than the existing Love's Lane in the county. So it meets city road standards, uh, which does make it a little bit safer. And as you can see on the aerial there, there was a sidewalk that was required with development, uh, of those condos there. That would also be required, uh, if this property to north would be able to develop. Uh, so it would be a continuation of that sidewalk on the annexed property side. So pedestrian and road improvements, hopefully increasing both pedestrian and vehicular access and safety. Uh, it would also be an extension, uh, with any development of the city's water and sewer system to hook up to that property.
Okay. I guess I do have one more. So you see how it jogs sort of around those condos? I know those three little condos. Does that impact, is anything impacting them?
No, there's only a jog there because the city limits are shown to jog on our GIS maps. They wouldn't be impacted at all. They're already in the city. You can see, um, on the aerial, they already have the sidewalk on their side of the street. The only impact would be future development would, would slightly impact them potentially with, with increased traffic, uh, and development across the street. But no change to those parcels, the townhomes, uh, they're already in the city. They shouldn't be affected.
All right. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, this is Shannon.
Yeah.
If I may, um, so a good example of, of this situation is, is what we have at Murdochs. And if you drive on Billman Lane or Travertine, you can see that on the Murdochs side of those two streets, they've put curb and gutter and made the improvements. But the property, um, I would say to the, on either side of, of Billman and Travertine is still in the county. And it's, it's still left as, as kind of a, an existing condition of the road. The other thing I would add is, is the aerial, um, isn't, isn't an updated aerial and, and the lot adjacent that looks as like a open field is now fully developed with Eagles Landing. And we do have water and sewer stubbed to our city limits, uh, line there at Love's Lane and, and where the five condos are at.
All right. Thank you. Good information. Any other clarifying questions? Go ahead, Melissa.
So I was looking at the staff report in my growth, my copy of the growth policy. So it looks like the areas identified on the extraterritorial jurisdiction, future land use map as medium residential, which is the second future land use map. And the first future land use map, it's not identified at all. And the, so the first land use map, this is, um, it's not trying to be a test, I promise. I'm just trying to get clarification. So the development that Shannon just mentioned, it looks like is marked as medium residential in the first future land use map. Is that right? Okay. So I guess what I'm curious to know is, um, in the staff report, it indicates, even though we're not voting on this tonight, it's in the staff report. So I just want to get clarification. That the intent is to build apartment buildings on the property. So we're talking about the parcel that was highlighted in Aqua or whatever color that was. Okay. Um, does medium residential allow for apartment buildings or is that only high density residential that allows for duplexes?
So the land use classifications, again, they don't allow for anything. The way it's listed, medium density, medium density residential, um, talks about single family homes and duplexes. If you look at the density range and the density being proposed, again, it's a proposal. We're not voting on a, a development. So it could be different in the future. Um, Eagles Landing, for example, is zoned R three, uh, which would be the logical thing to zone this parcel as well if we were to annex it. But if you look at the densities proposed, they meet those, that, that density range that's shown in, in the medium density residential. So in this case, because it's a larger lot with not that many units, it is in that medium density residential range. It doesn't trip into the higher density just because they're not putting, they're not proposing that number of units on, on the parcel. Um, so if they're proposing doubling the number of units on that parcel, then it would, it would jump into that high density residential land use type.
Okay. So that answers my question. So it's about density per basically lot size. And so you're saying that our, our two allows for this proposal?
Our R two would not allow for this proposal. Um, R two right now only allows for single family residences and duplexes. So if we're going to do condo development, like the adjacent property, it would have to be zoned R three, like the adjacent property to do multifamily.
Okay. But medium residential allows for R three at this density?
Yes and no. Um, R three basically covers a wide range and would allow a higher density than what would be shown as medium density residential on the future land use map.
Okay.
R two would, go ahead.
I, I don't want to get too much in the weeds since that's not what's on the agenda, but I just, I guess I want to make it clear that we're only voting on annexation and that everything else would be a question mark and that this vote is not tying us to any future vote. And I want to make sure, I guess, like the staff has made that clear with the, the landowner. That we can only vote on one thing at a time.
Yep, staff has discussed pretty extensively with the landowner about process. The landowner, uh staff has discussed either doing a sequential annexation and zoning, so having those both run at the same time or doing the annexation first and then the zoning. Um in this case, because annexation is not assured until it goes through this process, uh the landowner chose to do the annexation first and then we will move forward to zoning afterwards. That again, we'll have to go through a whole public process with zoning commission and the city commission. Uh so that'll be discussed again.
Okay, I don't want to get ahead of ourselves and ask too many questions about difference between R two and R three. I just want to make sure, I guess, that we know we're just only agreeing to the one thing and that everything else would get talked about later. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. I'll look forward to those conversations. Should this get through at another time.
I'm just going to jump in a little bit to make sure that we're all clear on process uh because process is important. I'm also going to show you a better picture because I like pictures. So while I'm talking about process, you can look at this better aerial overhead. So this is the current, whatever the new names of Eagles Landing is, and this is the property that we're we're now discussing. Um so Matthew's done a good job of explaining, this is the resolution and intent to bring it to a public hearing. So this is the first reading of just the annexation. It doesn't allow anything uh to be built at this point because it has to be zoned first. So it'll move, if passed tonight, it'll move to a public hearing. In the public hearing, the discussion will just be about annexation, just bringing the property into the city. If that passes at the next public hearing, then the process goes to the city zoning commission for their recommendation on what it should be zoned. So there's the, the city commission won't see that. First, it'll go to the zoning commission. They'll look at all the possibilities. Take into account whether it'll be spot zoning, if it's not R three, all kinds of different things. And um make a recommendation to the commission, and then the commission again will have the chance to review that and vote on what on a, on going with the recommendation of the zoning commission or not. Then once it's zoned, then the landowner has the right to build according to that zone. Um if they don't subdivide from there, it won't be seen again by anyone. Um if they build in accordance with the zoning without subdivision, then the zoning will be the last action that comes before the commission and anything else will be done through the staff site review policy. Um however, if they do subdivide, then that would go back to the planning board, and then they would make a recommendation on that, and then it would come to the city commission. So there's there's a lot of different ways to go depending on how the the landowner chooses to develop. But I didn't want to give the impression that no matter what happens, it'll come back to you for anything. Once it's zoned, it may not come back to the commission again, depending on how the owner goes from there. So I didn't, again, I don't want to get too far down in the weeds, but I just want to make sure that everyone knows there's lots of paths forward. Some of them, you'll see it multiple times, but at the very least, you'll see the zoning recommendation before anything happens there. So that's the very least that the commission will see.
Thank you so much. That's very helpful. I appreciate that. I yield.
All right, anyone else? So this is just an intent, the resolution um is an intent to go to a public hearing, and that is only one reading in a public hearing, correct? Um so commissioners, any other questions before we move to motion?
Don't forget public comment, do you?
Oh yeah, I'm sorry. First, but we had so many questions that we we uh got sidetracked or I did. Um any public comment on resolution fifty ten? Any public comment?
Uh yes, Madam Chair, if I may.
Go ahead, Sean.
Uh again, Sean Hill, thirteen fifteen South State Line Road, Drix, Idaho. So I'll reiterate that, you know, friends of Park County strongly believes that annexations should be strategic and city initiated. And this is because annexations, I believe, are one of the few few tools available to you to achieve strategic objectives, including affordable housing. And so we, you know, we believe this for for several reasons. Um we think that uh the city should subordinate annexations to the growth policy in a in a more deliberate way, including having a periodic land need analysis and only allowing annexations after a need is established by that citywide review. Ad hoc landowner initiated annexations are in our view inconsistent with the growth policy. Land that is annexed should also be subject to smart growth standards and also be planned for development, addressing a need such as housing. Um and if possible, those should be conditions of the annexation. The extension of facilities like water sewers, roads, lighting, public and public safety also should be subordinated to the growth policy and treated the same way as annexations. The only exception would be for extensions based on avoiding health, public health risks from failing or inadequate septic systems or wells. You um, I think submitted written testimony to the planning board on this point, but we're, no, I retract that, I'm sorry. Um you had no communication with the planning board on this matter. But um with regard to the, with the ETJ and the map, all the land use designations that are not pastoral, open space, like everything that is not pale green, I think needs to be replaced with rural versions. So those designations would allow for urban scale residential and commercial development. That would make annexation harder to justify as well as preventing inappropriate urban development outside of the city limits. Leave Commissioner Schwartz in the past sympathetic to this view. But that's uh that's been communicated to me by um outside parties. The ETJ map is, I find it very difficult to use at this scale. So I'm just wondering if there's a GIS version out there that might provide more clarity as to which uh properties are which. But I think all in all, we believe that annexation should be deliberate, strict, uh strategic and and city led. And in my work around the Greater Yellowstone ecosystem, this is um this is, this is a practice that's been taken up by many communities because we uh live in a special place, and I think we have a duty to the planet uh to the, to to the global community to protect the largest intact ecosystem in a temperate zone. And I think that we do that with rigor and strategic decision making. And then I have a factual question, and that is, was the annexation reviewed by the planning board? Or is that even a role they play in annexation? Uh if so, I think that they should. Um the city of Bozeman combined its planning board, zoning commission, as well as design review and impact P committees, and I think that has enabled them to really undertake that holistic review um for annexations and subsequent zoning actions. So thank you for the opportunity to comment, and um I probably won't talk to you before the holidays, so happy holidays.
Thank you, Sean. Any other public comment? And then I have a clarifying question just of his comments. Any other public comment? I don't see anyone else. Last call. Okay, thank you. Uh moving on to commissioner comments or questions. Any other questions from anyone else or comments?
Yep, may I?
Go ahead, Melissa, and then Quentin. I think you're up.
I um I think there were some things brought up that are I just, you know, Chair Holgland would be great if the staff had a chance to respond to regarding the annexation policy and where that lies. Because it's more of an administrative function than a board function. And it's, that's my understanding of the growth policy as well, that annexation policy is an administrative policy, not a legislative branch policy, um as well as the difference in government structure between Bozeman and Livingston and what is allowed. I believe that those are some important some important things to notice. We think about how we conduct business as a government and what we're legally able to do or not.
Well, thanks for asking my questions, Melissa. Thank you. Um Michael, could you clarify um annexation process and um that's like a part of the question as well?
I'll give you that, then to to speak to the Bozeman's uh structure, I'll turn that over to Matthew. He probably knows that more intimately than I do. As far as annexation goes, annexation is is a function of state law, basically. It's not a function of the city. So there are several ways that annexations can happen. They're all spelled out in state law. In this case, um owner initiated annexation is available in state law, so the city has to consider it. Um I think it's absolutely correct that when the city considers it, we need to take the growth policy into account. Um and I think that's exactly what Matthew has done in his staff report, is he's looked through not just any one specific area of the growth policy, but the growth policy in total to see if this meets the needs of the city, because often the growth policy is contradictory in itself because different goals require different things. Um in this case, you look at where the where the property is. Uh you look at what the possibility for development is and if it meets the goals stated in the growth policy. And I think he's done a great job of outlining that for you um in in the staff report. So I would just refer back to to the things that he's, he's already pointed out and why this is in accordance with our growth policy uh and is recommended by the staff. Um outside of that, uh it's annexation is not a function of the planning board and it's not a function of the zoning commission. Now, those are not things that they do. They do not review annexations. That is a city commission function. The zoning, once annexed, would go to the zoning commission. If you're doing it uh in tandem, as Matthew mentioned earlier, it can go to the commission and and the zoning commission at the same time to do the annexation and zoning simultaneously. The landowner chose not to do it that way this time, and that is their choice. They get to pick how that's done. Um so administratively, uh it is it is a function that comes to the city commission, which is why you're reviewing it tonight or deciding actually if you're going to hold a public hearing on it tonight is what you're doing. Um as far as the, our structure versus versus Gallatin County, I will turn that over to you, Matthew, and you can, you can explain why we can't do exactly what they can do.
So I think he's talking about Bozeman. Um it's a relatively new thing, so I don't know that much about it, to be honest. Um Bozeman had something like forty boards and commissions, um which they just consolidated significantly. Um and I'm assuming that's what he's referring to. That happened in the last month or so. Bozeman as as a charter city has broad the way to do things that we can't do, is the short answer to that. We, it was on our ballot. If the citizens voted against it, so we can't do certain things that Bozeman can do. So in this case, in the way that the state law is written about planning boards and the type of planning board that we have, we don't really have the option to give them a a look at annexations. Um this is covered under state law under annexations by petition. That's what's been done here. We're following that process. We don't have really any any other options because we have to follow state law. We don't have a charter, so we can't go above and beyond that, that state law. That's sort of the the short answer. The, you know, Bozeman decided that the number of commissions and boards they have had was was unrealeed, uh which was probably accurate um based on the number of boards they had and the size of their city. So they consolidated a lot of those recently. Uh I haven't looked that deeply into it, um just because it's not something that we would be considering at this time. We just don't have that number of boards. Um again, the consolidation of the the planning board and the zoning commission has been discussed with you a few times um in the creation of a city county planning board, uh which would basically cover the city and extraterritorial jurisdiction and would have the ability to become a zoning commission. Uh the commission did uh request that that was delayed until after the strategic plan came out. So uh that's where that is right now. Uh and just to address one more thing in Sean's comments uh about protecting the the unique ecosystem we live in. Um you know, that's a, that's a big part of the growth policy. There's a whole chapter on our environment. Um this is a parcel that's in an already developed area. There's relatively high density for us condos adjacent. Uh there's an interstate highway that's adjacent to that. Um based on the growth policy and based on everything I've heard through public comments, the preference for the city to provide housing would be to grow into already developed areas to provide higher density housing, which protects the environment in the outlined areas. And I think that's what this, the goal of this is to achieve. Um now that's going to come down to zoning on how that looks in the end. Um but I do think this this protects the environment much better than a greenfield development on the edge of town. Uh and it does in some ways, the more areas we develop at higher densities that are already developed prevents us from growing the city out uh further and further away from the city center. So I do think this is consistent with that that portion of the growth policy as well in that it does protect the environment and does discourage sprawl, even though the city limits are are growing. And the future land use map for the ETJ was very well considered by the planning board in those areas that they didn't show in that light green of pastoral and open space. That's because they are generally already developed or adjacent to high levels of development. So those were chosen specifically because they weren't agricultural lands and the environment is probably already impacted by development.
Chair Holgland, can I just share one thing I thought they would cover that wasn't covered?
Yes.
Our, so our annexation policy is, our annexation plans are actually um I'm not sure if it was passed, this is before my time, by, if it's passed by resolution or if it's just a staff policy, like a executive policy, but it's under the planning department. There's a robust collection of documents under the building and planning document center on the website. And there's a three-page annexation policy on there where it describes just what Matthew said already. So I'm not going to reread it, but that's something we use too when we're making decisions.
And just to note, that would need to be, if it were to be updated, that would have to be passed by the commission. It's it's an official city policy, so it goes through the commission likely by resolution. Um so if it were to be updated, um and it is recommended to be updated in the growth policy, it's, it'd be something to discuss through that strategic planning process that's under there.
And then it's something that like lives with the planning department and it's used to make decisions. So it's not in the growth policy. I just wanted to like point that out. That's all I have. Thanks.
All right, anyone else?
Warren beat me. Go ahead, Warren.
Warren?
Okay, I just wanted to um kind of support uh Matthew on that, where if there's a discrepancy in the growth policy or anywhere, actually, it would seem to me that uh priorities and basically common sense would have to be used. I mean, this is a this particular parcel is right on the edge of a well-developed area, uh and there's development past it. And again, using uh a priority point of view and the, and a reality point of view, it's already developed. Uh it's not like any precedent is being set to uh to take it a half mile outside the city or or anything in that distance and it and it would be uh developed uh in an area that would uh save green space rather than developing it there. Are you?
Quentin, thank you, Warren.
Uh, thank you, Warren. That's exactly what I was going to uh comment on as well. I've had my two cents, so very well said. Um and thank you, Matthew, for your explanations. Uh great job and great work.
Oh, I yield.
All right, thank you. All right, are we, anything else? Are we, are we ready for a motion?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a motion on resolution fifty eleven?
I'm moving accept resolution fifty fifty ten.
And thank, I was just going to switch that. Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion by Maybe and a second by Friedman. Roll call, please.
Chair Holgland?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
For.
Commissioner Freeman?
For.
Commissioner Maybe?
For.
Commissioner News?
For.
Motion passes. Moving on to resolution fifty eleven, a resolution of the city commission of the city of Livingston, Montana, authorizing the city manager to apply for the competitive grant program of the American Rescue Plan Act Round Two, an authorization to commit required matching funds via creation of a special improvement district for the American Rescue Plan Act Competitive Grant Program Round Two. Mr. Cardes, that's a long one.
Adam Tarek, so that's quite the mouthful, but really all it means is that you are approving me to apply for the second round of ARPA wastewater fees. Again, we we are limiting this to a wastewater grant because our water fees do not meet the target rate. So we're not eligible to put in any requests for water system upgrades. But this does allow us, I think, a unique opportunity. We have been working with the residents of Green Acres for quite a while to try and reduce the cost to them of being connected to the to the wastewater system. This allows us an opportunity to include the new residents on Garnier, Grandview, Arbor, and the area just annexed to be able to to save the same amount of money or at least the same type of money as far as upgrading the the sewer system goes. There is a deadline to apply for this money on the fourteenth. And it is a we could get up to a two million dollar grant, I think, is is the limit on the on the on the process right now. That does require five hundred thousand match. And I think the current estimate for this project is just over three point three million. So basically, almost two thirds of the cost could be covered through this ARPA grant. Just for a quick visual of what we're talking about, I will try and give you a rundown. So this is Park Street, Bennett Street. So this is our wastewater treatment plant here. The dash lines you see is existing infrastructure of different sizes. Blue is larger. I think purple is even larger than that. So there are different sizes of sewer mains in this case. The solid lines you see would be the additional infrastructure that would be placed in in the area. So it covers this area, including the trailer park here on Miles and Garnier. And then we'll put a larger main across Maple, which would be able to collect all of Green Acres as well as the Grandview Arbor area to bring down into the wastewater treatment plant. These are preliminary designs. It may not end up exactly in these in these exact locations. But in general, it gives you an idea of the size of the project that would bring pretty much the entire area would be available to be on our sanitary sewer at that point. The what's before you tonight, and I'll stop sharing that. I'll put it back up if you have any questions. Really, it's just authorizing me to assign assign the application for the grant as well as saying that we will match the necessary funds. In this case, it's a quarter of our initial allotment is how they calculate it, but it comes to basically half a million dollars. So this is basically saying that half a million dollars plus the extra money, which is about another seven to now about another seven hundred thousand dollars, would be then spread out across the special improvement district. That would be for both the residents of Green Acres and Grandview Arbor Garnier. So it would be across all the properties in this area. You may notice, well, I'm gonna share that with you because I did forget to tell you one thing. You may notice or make a question on the fact that it does not extend into this area, which was also annexed. This goes out towards the river. The reasoning for that is that that is an undeveloped area at this time. And if it were to be developed into the future, then that would be the responsibility of the developer to extend the utilities at that time. There's no reason to extend utilities into undeveloped land and charge the rest of the landowners for that at this point, where if development happens in the future, that'll be a requirement of the developer to extend those those utilities. So that is the overview. I'm happy to answer any questions. If you have any more technical questions, I don't know if Shannon signed up yet. Nope, he's still on. So you can ask him any of the technical questions. But that tonight is just a request to be able to apply for the grant. Obviously, if we do not receive the grant, we may have to adjust some of these plans. But the the ideal case would be to to receive the money to cover a lot of these costs and be able to get the the project done as soon as possible.
All right, thank you. Any clarifying before we open it to public comment? Melissa.
I just have one question. So this five hundred thousand that would be part of the matching, does this come from the total ARPA funds available from the last meeting? It was like one million nine hundred ninety-three thousand fifty-two dollars if if we get the grant.
So the money would not come from those ARPA funds, but that's how the amount is calculated?
Gotcha. Thank you.
The money would come from the special improvement district, not from the original ARPA funds.
Okay, thank you so much for clarifying that. Glad I asked. That was my only clarifying question, Chair Hoagland.
Thank you, Melissa. Any other clarifying before before we open it to public? Any public comment on resolution fifty eleven? Any public comment? I feel like we lost some people. Did we lose people, Faith? Want to make sure that.
About none.
The only people left, I think, are staff and future Commissioner Hale.
All right, thank you. Well, I thought so because I could scroll through and now I can't. So just checking to make sure that no one was booted off by accident. All right, so no public comment on resolution fifty eleven, Commissioner.
I'll jump in for Public Works for yay Public Works Projects. I this is such a big deal. We were not in a pandemic when this was annexed. Everyone was worried about infrastructure. Here's an opportunity to offset the cost, unfortunately, because of the pandemic. But it's such a big deal to the community to offset these costs. So I'm really excited about it. It's too bad. There's not more public here since everybody was really interested in this topic specifically. But I think this is a great a great project and a great opportunity for this section of town. So I'm glad it's in front of us.
Agreed. It was very heated at one point. And so the commission and the city committed to helping the best we could with as much, you know, human power as possible to help figure out ways to make this achievable financially for the annexed area. And I think this is a great possible option, and I really hope it works. Hope it's one of the grants we get because I know we didn't get a grant according to one of the letters I just received and opened today. So.
Matt, if you're fine, I'd like to add just a couple of things.
Go ahead.
First, I I would like to say Shannon has done an incredible job with the residents out here. He's held a ton of meetings and his staff has been really involved, especially with the Green Acres residents. And now we'll roll that over to the other residents that I may include in this. And I just also would actually like to thank the Commerce Department because we actually already did receive some money to help us prepare this application. They actually are helping pay TD and H Engineering to do some of the preliminary engineering work. That was part of the program was we could get a grant to cover the engineering costs for the application. And the Commerce Department did provide that to us. So I just wanted to thank them. We've already saved the the community some money just through that process. So both of those things, I think, were just important to mention. So thank you.
All right, great. Thank you. Good information. Anyone else? All right, do we have a motion from the commission on resolution fifty eleven?
I move we accept resolution fifty eleven.
Second.
We have a motion by maybe and a second by Friedman. Roll call, please.
Chair Hoagland.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Four.
Commissioner Freeman.
Four.
Commissioner Maybe.
Four.
Commissioner News.
Four.
Motion passes. Tonight, we have no action items. We do have city manager comments because it's under the timeline.
It is, and I'll keep up to it. So first of all, just Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. I hope you all enjoy the holidays. Second of all, I'd just like to thank everybody that came to the open house today. It was a lot of fun to have people through, show them the building, show them some of the benefits of of moving in here. So that was that was a really great great event. I think I really did have fun. And then lastly, just to notify you that I will be out for next week and Faith will be out as well. So if you need something, just contact the appropriate department head for whatever your question is or for general questions, you can just call Courtney. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Can I ask a question since it's your time? So I did get a letter for from, and I'm sure others have seen it. It was on December first, and then it was from the Montana Department of Commerce. We had requested a community development block grant, CBDG dash CB. Could you tell me what that project was? It was rejected. I mean, it said it was below the threshold for needing to have greater than fifty-one percent low to moderate income persons impacted. And we were at forty-two point one nine. So could you explain this in this letter?
Sure. And I'll try to explain it in non-CDGB talk. For the community development block grants, they have many different kinds of of grants, and we've been very successful with them. But they have recently changed the way they calculate poverty in a community. And now there's a certain subset of CDGB grants that we no longer qualify because thankfully, our poverty level isn't high enough to qualify for those grants. This particular grant was for the Green Acres Sewer Project. So we switched it. Commerce was actually very helpful. We got on a Zoom meeting with them or Microsoft Teams. Anyway, it was a video conference with them. And they suggested switching this project from the CDGB grant over to the ARPA Phase Two grant. And so that's one of the reasons that this is coming before you. The ARPA came before you tonight was that Commerce helped us work with that and find a different method for hopefully offsetting that cost to the to residents. So it's the same project. We just had to switch the source of the grant funding due to our, I guess, improved poverty numbers.
Great. Well, that's not a bad thing, I guess. Yeah, thank you for clarifying. Yes, it doesn't actually say what we were requesting, and we have talked about it. We talked about many grants. But in this letter, it was a little, yeah, little Montana government-like, no offense. But it didn't have a lot of clarity. So now I know. That was my only question, Michael. Okay, should we move on to commissioners? Melissa.
I just want to say thank you to the city staff for the open house today. It was really nice. It was fun. It was great to be able to see people in a more relaxed way and get to see some staff and the photos. Everybody loved the photos. Everybody feels really proud of the photos, I think, in City Hall. So excellent, excellent job. And I don't know what to say about Commissioner Maybe and Chair Hoagland. You both are so fantastic, and it's been a really wonderful gift and honor to be able to serve alongside you on the city commission. So thank you. Thank you for your service to our community. We've had some really tough meetings together, and I've appreciated both of you and the different perspectives that you bring.
Thank you.
Don't be a stranger. Let's go get tea or coffee or whatever.
Oh, it's going to be more than that at this stage, believe me. Yeah, usually not my my thing all the time, but now, you know.
And I and I want to yield my time for your speech and Warren's speech, so.
Right, thank you, Melissa. Warren, you're up.
Well, I don't have a speech, but I want to thank you for your leadership for the time that I've been on the commission because I I I think it's really been outstanding. I've been very, very happy to have been on the commission, and I think it's been an exceptional four years. There there has been an unbelievable amount of progress made. There's been a lot of loose ends tied up, so to speak, from previous city issues. We now have a strategic plan and a growth policy that was growth policy put together by a tremendous amount of citizen input. Both documents give us tremendous guidance and and avoid a tremendous amount of tangential non-issues that get cranked into things sometimes. So it's 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 been a real honor serving with everybody here. I hope I contributed. I think I did. And I think the new people, the new commissioners, will definitely do the same. And I think we're moving forward in a in an excellent, positive direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Warren. Mel, go ahead.
Yeah, I want to ditto Melissa and recognize Darrell and Warren is really added an awful lot to this commission. Been in the commission for a hundred years and I went to the open house today. We are open for business for the first time. We have under one roof a lot of people. Instead of chasing somebody or making a phone call, you can walk down the hall and somebody's there that you want to talk to. Great job putting it together, the pictures and the whole thing. But it's a it just adds so much to what we do and we've got some good stuff coming in the future. There's an awful lot going on all over the country and especially locally. And we keep putting it tighter and tighter and getting more answers and I looking forward to more years, a couple more years of the commission. It's been a a pleasure to serve, and I want to wish Darrell and Warren again just a good, good life and it was a pleasure just to be part of it. And I think as time goes on, we get stronger and I couldn't be happier. Everybody have a good holiday, good safe and a good holiday. Amen.
Thank you, Mel. Quentin.
Me next?
Yes, go ahead.
I just waiting for you to acknowledge me.
I did. It must have cut out.
It got lost. Okay. Darrell, thank you. Thank you for your leadership and your guidance. It's always been great to be able to call on you and and get a straight answer. Warren, thank you for your friendship and for being patient, sitting at the farmer's market with me. I've really enjoyed that. It's a great time to get to know get to know one another and everything else. Great job at the open house. Place looks beautiful. What a great thing to have everybody under run one roof where they should be. And it just makes life so much easier. Other than that, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and I'm looking forward to working with the new commissioners. I yield.
Well, thank you, Quentin. I promise you, I don't have an hour. I promise. But thank you, everyone, for your compliments. I'm very like sensitive and emotional, but I try to not be, so if I lose it, okay. But I was thinking about it today in particular, and one of the things I ran on and I put it on my little postcard was to be a balanced, like balanced leadership and then committed to community. There's my postcard. Here's me, same person. My loss. And I I do feel like I followed through with the balanced part. And I always had pushed and have I've said this and I've pushed for it that what I want and what I get are not always the same. But I try to find middle ground to at least get a little bit. And I think that I'm proud of that. I'm proud of that work, and I feel like our commission has done that too. And I love our community, even after this really hard year, and it was hard for the last couple of years, and people were mean. I still love it. I still love our place and and when, another thing I was thinking about is when I ran, my twins were six years old. And right now, as we speak, my 15-year-old is playing varsity. Only freshman on varsity. Just want to say that out for her, Gray. But she, so she's 15 and there were six, and it's been a long time and a long commitment from my family to make this work. One day, Gray said, I hate this commission thing, and that she was about eight. And and I was like, well, it's something I have to do, and I've committed to our community as well, and it's, you'll see it as important. And now she stopped saying she hates it. So she sees what's important. Couple other things. I'm sorry, I do have a few more. You know, we've dealt with some tough issues. We were in an economic downturn when I first came on the commission. And in that first year or so, two years, we've gone through COVID. City staffing, here's my dog to say hi. We've had a lot of haters, a lot of mean people. We've had attempted to make for government changes like our charter form, and it was rejected because of hate misinformation, unfortunately. We had our, our crossing rejected. And I understand why, but at least we gave it to the people. And that hadn't been done to what we did, at least in the last 50 years. There were some commitment, but we did it. We committed. But you know, on the positives, I want to make sure we state them. And Warren, you said it as well, Melissa, some of the work we have done, growth policy, downtown improvements, and I mean, I was trying to list it and it goes on and on and on, but I didn't want to say every single thing, but we have a new park. Okay, that's been approved, and yes, it's in the design stage, but that's huge. We have a new park. First one in a long time. We also have our strategic plan, which is a great commission-led you know, initiative. The Water Reclamation Center, I mean, huge. Annexations, multiple. Let's see, affordable housing, the old hospital, the new hospital. That's all been done within the last eight years. I don't think a lot of communities our size could say the same. I definitely know that Laurel could not say that. Dogs are running, sorry about that. And, and Laurel is similar to us. They're a railroad town. They also do have the refinery. Thankfully, we do not. But you know, we've done a lot of work. And I appreciate you. And this, this commission that's sitting right now, I think, has been one of the best groups I've ever worked with in my whole life, and I've worked along a long time. So thank you. And so thank you to the city staff, our city manager, in particular, our staff that really worked with us a lot. Obviously, Michael, Faith couldn't do this without you. Shannon, so much help with information coming from him, and especially with the Water Reclamation Center and all those updates. Amazing. Courtney, Lisa, Matthew, our newest addition to information giving. The community of Livingston, thank you. You've been engaged and more engaged than ever. Fellow commissioners, thank you. Melissa, for your vigilance and commitment to know as much as possible before you make a decision more than I think people appreciate or even realize. Warren, I like your quiet but involved. You're like my little Quiet Riot kind of person. I call it the Quiet Riot because you get a lot done behind the scenes. And remember way back when you come into all the meetings over Love's Truck Stop. Think you were more verbal then than you are now, but hey, took, you know, you got to start somewhere. Mel, love your little nuggets of truth at the end. Throw one, throw one in right at the end, and, and my favorite Mel quote, so moved. And Quinton, thank you for your lightheartedness, your caring, your commitment to the community in always, I think, trying to look at it in a balanced way as well. Even though we don't always get what we want, we get some of it, and I think we have to say that as a commission. Yes, here's my don'ts. I have a couple don'ts. Don't let narcissists sabotage meetings. Just this is for future. This is mean people. Don't let them dominate. Don't let them take over. And then last, don't lose track who we work for, that we work for our community, and our favorite, or my favorite thing about our community is that we're very, I always call it, we're like the flaming liberals and the ultra conservatives and everything in between. And that we have to find a balance because we shouldn't be driven by agendas. We should be driven by what's best for the whole. And we've got to find middle ground. We got, we've got to put that as first because really, our community is more than just our opinions. Don't let personal agendas, like the not in my backyard yarders, is what I call them. You know, city personal agendas, commission personal agendas, community personal agendas drive us and drive our community. We've got to listen. We've got to take care of all, all of Livingston, our old people, our elderly, I should say, I shouldn't say old people, but I'm old, so I'm getting older. I just don't look my age, but children, we do a lot, businesses, our diverse population, our constituents, and take care of our natural spaces and take care of our river. And if we take care of all those things, and we always think middle ground, I think we'll get, we'll, we'll get it all. We'll get what we've worked for and what our community deserves. So thank you. That's all.
Thanks.
Thank you, guys. This meeting of the Livingston City Commission is now adjourned. Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. Thank you.
Darrell, you didn't disappoint.
Oh, thank you. Now I'm gonna cry. I mean, leave the room and cry. Bye.